Hello, I'm Susan Dershow from Six Pillow Road. I just wanted to comment on the new road signage that's along Jones. And I suppose it's, well, I know it's on other streets too as well. And I'm sure you, I know in fact, that the city has heard the complaints because I read their response in the newsletter and I wasn't very satisfied with that response. I realize, based on that response, I'm going to accept it as fact that it's not required, that they mark that it's Jones Road. But just because it's not required doesn't mean it's not a good idea. And the reason I say that is, well, a couple of things I noticed as I started viewing it. One is, this stop sign right here, as you enter the property, it's not the same for one. And for two, it doesn't identify it as Jones Road. And I also noticed that on the front of the City Hall, it doesn't have the street address, it just says it's City Hall. So, that I think is problematic. But I also think that we have people who come into the city not from Westgate and not from Ernest Robles. They come across the parking lot, maybe they come across the parking lot and they come out right here in front of Loco, Lone Oak. Maybe they come out right over there in front of Pillow. And I think at Pillow, if you're at that stop sign, it does say Jones. But if you're at, coming out of the parking lot over here, it doesn't say Jones at Lone Oak. And I think the whole thing just looks unfinished from the Jones roadside. And I also think that it's kind of, I don't, can't really quite put my finger on the word. But to suppose or to assume that everyone knows that it's Jones Road because they came in on Westgate or they came in on Ernest Robles is to just defy reality. Everyone's not looking at the street signs when they're turning for a variety of reasons. We have delivery trucks, we have Ubers, we have all kinds of people. And I don't see why it would be so difficult to just add Jones Road at those three streets. Sunset Trail, I guess it's four streets, Reese, Pillow, and Lone Oak. I think it would be beneficial, and I also think it'd be beneficial for us to put our address on the front of our City Hall. I mean, if you're looking for City Hall in Sunset Valley, okay, you're probably going to notice that it is. But I don't think it would hurt to have the street address on there. And that's really all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you very much for the feedback. Other members of the public that wish to speak at this time? Councilor Rosenbaum?
Regarding street signs in the meadows, I've had a number of complaints because they're only one-sided. And again, same thing, newsletter article says this is the way it is and nothing's going to change. But, and I made a comment in an email and it was taken incorrectly as though I was being harsh. And all I was trying to say, it's pretty simple. It's like, if you look at this and you're replacing it with marketing pieces, all you do is take exactly what was there and then add the marketing pieces. That's it. That's all I was trying to say. So the same thing in the meadows is one sign is mounted on the center of the square post versus at the end. Those that are mounted on the end are double-sided. Those that are mounted in the center are one-sided. So when you turn onto Yellow Tail, you have to see Yellow Tail, you turn, and then you don't know you're on Yellow Tail until, till you go to the next street. And then there may or may not be a sign, and I'm trying to do this from memory and remember which side. I think Yellow Tail is facing Yellow Tail. And you're coming up on Lovegrass and you can't verify that you're going to be turning left and you're on Yellow Tail. That's correct. That's the way it is. And then when you turn on Yellow Tail and you look there, now I can confirm, but you're already on the street. So if you didn't want to be on Yellow Tail and it was a different street, you're going to shoot. Now I'm on Yellow Tail, there's no place to turn around until you go all the way down to the end, turn around and come back. So that is what the complaints are. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Other members of the public wish to speak at this time? All right, we're going to move on to staff reports, starting with the city administration.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will highlight a few items from the administration report. I'm happy to say that GovDelivery has been successfully launched. So iContact has been discontinued. And so all of the city's digital, well, excuse me, email communications that now also include SMS options for certain topics have been switched over to GovDelivery. I feel it's pretty successful. I want to thank Caitlin Neal and of course Melissa also, who worked on the project and the implementation and the launch. So just to pull up your report that I got today, they will send me monthly metrics.
Matt, if you could, the monitor behind you is not showing.
There we go. Okay, so there's 533 total subscribers. That's 87 new subscribers. So we had already imported the, all the email contacts from iContact. But those 87, those are most likely all new SMS subscribers. And so we had this many recipients. We sent 18 bulletins in January. Of course, we started, I think, January 13th. And we had a 61.7% engagement rate, which I feel that's a, that's a, that's a pretty good rate. And I can show you an example of a report here. So this was for the email notice that was sent. So we get these, these reports for every single bulletin that we sent out, send out, excuse me. So this was the notice for the council meeting this evening. So 117 folks were signed up to receive. One bounced back, I believe it was, I looked into it, it was an SMS or a text message that bounced back. So 75% open rate and 16% click rate, meaning 16% of the recipients that opened it actually clicked on the link for the agenda. So overall, I think, I think that's a pretty good, pretty good engagement. And we will continue to monitor, you know, how engagement is going. And if residents or members of the public have any issues with GovDelivery, they can contact City Hall and we can help them get signed up or resolve any issues. Wanted to highlight also GovBuild permitting and licensing software. The buildout is underway and staff has now started doing training. Jerry and I have been in two-hour training sessions for the past couple of days. More staff will take trainings starting next week. We still probably have, have another month or two before we can actually launch. But we can see the light at the end of the tunnel, which is, which is good. We're, we're making really good progress. Wanted to highlight some upcoming events next week. On Tuesday, at 6:30, here in City Hall, we will be having an Uplands Community Meeting led by MEND. So Carrie and her team will be here and presenting the initial, it'll be three concept designs along with the design, potential design for North Reese and Stadium Drive. Members of the public that attend will be able to make comments on the different designs. There will also be opinions of probable costs for each design so that the public has an idea of what each, you know, what each different design costs. And they can vote on their favorite and make comments. So I encourage all members of council to attend, but we will be collecting the feedback in case you're not able to attend. Carolyn may talk more about this, but the Public Works Open House will be Saturday, March 1st to kick off Spring Cleaning Month. Pleased to announce that we've been in contact with the Austin Fire Department, specifically the Wildfire Division. I know some residents are probably concerned, given the green space here and, or the abundant green space here and what's been going on out in California with the wildfires. So I've already been in contact with them. We want to use some of those supplemental hours that are included in our contract with Austin Fire. So the Assistant Director, Director put me in touch with Division Chief Stewart in the Wildfire Division. And so they're going to ensure that someone's here, or a few folks are here from the Wildfire Division to talk to residents at the open house. They'll have a table. And additionally, I would like our staff, Public Works, Public Safety, to do it, some tabletop exercises with the Wildfire Department. So that we're ready, you know, in case of, in case of disaster. Any questions from anything else in the admin report?
Councilor Rosenbaum?
It's not on the agenda, but where are we on resolution for HR in admin?
We are making progress. I have, I'm working with, I have a sample kind of scope of services. Again, we're not pursuing a formal RFQ because we're, we want the, the proposals to be under 50,000 so that it doesn't trigger the need to go to a formal RFQ. So our city attorney, he's not here tonight, I told him he did not have to attend. But he's reviewing the proposed scope of services. I'll let the mayor review it and then we'll probably put that proposal out to, to, you know, to seek a consultant. And then we can bring that con, proposed contract to council.
Okay.
At a later date. I'm hoping by, by the March meeting or maybe, maybe the early April meeting to bring that contract to council.
Thank you.
Matt, one thing that we haven't talked about a little bit in a while, but the records management, if you could just give us an update on that project now that we have the digital traditional staff.
Yes. So I think the next step is really figuring out how we're going, you know, how we're going to categorize and inventory the records. And what we've decided is we've got, we've got certain records that are over in the offsite storage that have a to-be-destroyed date, right? They're, they're, they're records that only need to be kept for four, five years. We're not generating as many of those records anymore because we've moved, you know, so much, so much of our records have moved to digital, right? We don't have a lot of those paper records anymore. But what we've decided is it doesn't really make sense if the records are to be destroyed in the next, you know, four to five years, it doesn't make sense to scan those. But we have a lot of boxes that are marked permanent that we need to, you know, those we need to get digitized. Along with, we have other, this is going to be really the focus of this year, is we have a lot of boxes that aren't labeled well and they're miscellaneous. And so we need to start going through those boxes and that'll, that'll be a big job for Melissa. And she'll have Alina and others to, to support her in that. Is to determine, you know, are these boxes, do we really need to keep these records? And if so, you know, are they permanent, you know, can we destroy them? So that'll be a lot of what we're doing this year is going through those boxes of, of really unknowns and categorizing them and preparing them to be, to be scanned, so.
Any other questions for the administration report? All right, moving on to Public Works. I did want to point out that we had another good month as far as sales tax. And so we're very pleased that, that reflects hopefully continued sales from some of the new businesses that have been disbanded.
And just to echo that, so we're getting a new restaurant, or new tea house in Market Fair, I believe. No, Jerry issued the permit today. They had a very light remodel, so it's like a boba tea and specialty tea. It's going to go at the end of Market Fair, so where, where DISO is. And so that'll be opening soon. Vibe Optometry is leaving. Cindy Lassard said they have a pending lease, but Vibe obviously is not contributing to sales tax. And then there is, this is good news too, that the, the rather large space that's been vacant over at the Homestead for a few years, there's a pending lease for that. So I think it's all good news for the shopping centers.
Thank you. Moving on to Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Public Works has been busy over the last month. We were working on the freeze response during the winter storm that we had as well. And we have several upcoming projects, I mean, projects that are underway. The Ernest Robles Way Project, I think there was an update that went out that that's going to be, the rain's kind of delayed a little bit. So it's going to be a little bit longer for that road closure on that westbound side of the road before we flip over to the eastbound side of Ernest Robles Way. Savannah Trail is mostly completed. They're finishing up with all of the landscaping at this time. And they've already started work on the construction of the turnaround at the end of Countrywide Lane. We have a couple of community events happening, including tomorrow. We have a Wednesday walk. If anybody wants to join us, we'll meet here at about nine o'clock and go on a, probably a two, two and a half mile walk and then come back here. At the next Wednesday walk, we will be heading over to the Gaines Green Belt. So we'll meet here, but we'll carpool over to the Gaines Green Belt to go walk. Public Works Open House is March 1st from 9:30 to noon. We hope to see everybody there. We have a lot of vendors and people who will be there and some of our, other services that will be on site to provide information. We're working on the trails and stuff behind City Hall. We're still waiting for that exception request for the majority of work for the City Hall backyard project. And then there was also a valve repair at the end of Oakdale that happened toward the end of last week as well. And if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Public Works? Councilor Rosenbaum?
Winter water averaging is now over?
Should be, yes, at the end of January. Yes.
At the end of January. Thank you.
Then, yeah, new ice water rates will be reflected, I believe, in the March bill.
So one follow-up question I had, acknowledging that we've had feedback about those, the new signage that's gone in. And we may be, you know, looking at that as a future, you know, change or something that council desires or we want to move forward with some other, you know, changes to get some feedback. As far as the planned work, are we all completely finished with the signs, including the replacement of some of the, like the, the small sign on the end?
The recent sunset sign?
I think like that, yeah.
Yeah. That one, I have to double check. I haven't been over there to see if they replaced it. They, they, it was in manufacturing, so it was supposed to be replaced either, it's still there, that it's supposed to be replaced this week. So I'll get, I'll get, I'll double check on the timeline of that. It should be replaced, that that one's supposed to be coming out and replaced by a normal-sized sign. And, but Oakdale was corrected and the other, and there was one other thing, they, they had added a no outlet sign.
Well, they put the, you know, the marker sign is now double-sided.
Yeah, it's double-sided, yes. Those are, those are all corrected. But yeah, the Reese was the last one that they were supposed to be, I think it should be going in this week if it hasn't, since it has not already.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that, you know, council, hearing feedback, you know, there's something that we might want to take up as far as, you know, changes that could improve the signage that we have, even if it's not necessarily required. But I think that's something, I just want to make sure that we understand the scope right now as planned is almost complete. It's just remaining small item like the small sign.
Right.
Councilor Rosenbaum?
I'd love to hear the reasoning that the sign company put a short post in.
I, I have no idea.
They never gave you a reason?
No. But when I reported it to the person that we had been working with, he's like, yeah, we're going to fix that. So I have no idea.
So why even waste the energy to put it in when you know it's too short?
When there's a three and a half foot off-the-ground stop sign, yeah, no.
Any other questions for Public Works? Moving on to Public Safety.
Good evening. We have our upcoming Public Safety Committee meeting on the 24th. We will continue discussing an ongoing issue with traffic in the villas and some parking issues. For this meeting, we will discuss the idea of parking permits for each resident. We've had a complaint that keeps coming up about an issue there and that's one of the suggestions, so we will discuss that. I'll try to limit the agenda so that we can come out of there with something to bring back to council later, discussing the pros and cons of parking permits. But we will also continue to try to solve one of the specific issues there. Just the idea of possible permits may help solve that problem if we can discuss that with, with the resident there that's kind of causing some of this. We are also going to discuss smoking in the green belt. The city administrator mentioned the fire wise training. And we want to bring up the idea of limiting smoking in the green belt. I know Austin doesn't allow smoking in some public parks and whatnot. So we may, that may be an idea that we have for our green belt as well. I also have an update on, it's rare that we get something like this, but we had a, do you have the picture, Matt? We had a hate crime there on, in the villas, I mean, in the meadows. And there's been numerous incidents of just someone randomly putting swastikas on cars in the surrounding cities and in Austin. Well, we had a break on that this week on this case. An incident happened in Austin and we saw the bulletin for it and we sent our picture. And just the flourish of the way this is done matched up so closely with their, with that agencies that we worked with them. And then we also reached out to some of the surrounding areas. And they've arrested the individual that did theirs. We were able to use our city cameras and I probably shouldn't be saying this, but the morning this happened, he was right in our city at four in the morning, the morning that this happened. So more than likely, we'll be obtaining a warrant for the person as well for this in our city.
I'm glad that that was fortuitous and it sounds like there's a way to move forward on that. Yeah, it was very disturbing to see that, that happen and it, hopefully there's not like a targeted connection or anything like that. So, but we'll find out more.
Doesn't look like there was any rhyme or reason to it, other than what the suspect maybe had in his mind, but.
Councilor Rosenbaum?
You didn't mention coffee with the police?
Yes, we, we had coffee with a cop. What did we have, about a dozen people last Monday? Got some, that's where we got some of the ideas about the parking in the villas was from parking with, was from coffee with a cop, which is the purpose of those little meetings. We only get a handful of people that come, but we get some kind of honest feedback from residents. And that's actually where we got the idea to bring it up at the next Public Safety meeting.
Any other questions? Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is Council Consideration of Agenda Items for Approval on Consent. Councilor Rosenbaum?
I move to approve on, on consent. Agenda Item Number Five and Agenda Item Number Six. And Agenda Item Number Eight with the idea that we use a purchase order as the deposit, not 75% of funds. That's it.
Do we need to discuss that last item? Let's pull that one for discussion just so that we have clarity on, on the, the addendum or the addition. Anybody want to remove either Item Number Five or Six? Is there a second for that motion?
Oh, and on Five with corrections.
With corrections, okay.
Yes.
And staff has received those corrections? Okay, thank you. Is there a second for that?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of approving on consent, Item Number Five and Number Six, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we approved on consent. The meeting minutes from the January 7th, 2025 regular meeting. And Item Number Six, Approval of a Proclamation Declaring March 2025 Spring Cleaning Month. All right, council, we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is Item Number Seven. Consider an Act on Approval of the Revised Reimagined Brody Schematic Design Task Order with Four Men Collaborative for Fiscal Year 2024/2025. And with that, I'll hand it over to staff for an overview of this item.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a bring-back item. So the original Reimagined Brody Phase One A Task Order that was approved with the fiscal year 2024/2025 budget was tabled when task orders were discussed back in September. And council asked that they review this project as part of the council retreat, which we did. So some of the things that came out of that discussion were, you know, I think council's really eager to see some updated signage, especially placemaking. And also getting lighting along Brody Lane. Determine how dark sky will be affected with the project. Reviewing the scope of work with MEND and with Freeland Turk, which staff has done. There was, I believe, a consensus that rather than having separated facilities along, along certain parts of Brody to really focus on just having a combined-use trail for both pedestrians and bicycles to reduce the cost and the scope of the project. I believe there was also consensus that rather than doing the, some of the custom Ballard lightings to, and other street lightings to use what is available with the, the contract with the City of Austin, which would also reduce the cost of the project. Utilization of existing trails and value engineering from the feedback across all committees were to reduce the cost of the first phase by at least 25%. So that's kind of the, the starting point. But I believe there's a lot of council committees that want that cost to be even lower than just the 25%. So after the council retreat, staff met with, with Carrie, with MEND and Tom Turk, the city's engineer. And we had a good fruitful discussion about making those changes and kind of, I guess what we'll call Phase One of this Reimagined Brody project is really focusing on the east side trail, pedestrian and bicycle trail from 290 all the way down to Home Depot Boulevard. And then getting from Home Depot Boulevard to the Violet Crown Trail. So that is really the, and there's actually a photo of this in the task order. So this is now the focus of the scope of the project and only on the east side of Brody Lane, not on the west side. So be happy to answer any questions. Carrie and Tom are here as well. Carolyn, so any questions or comments from council?
And also this, this is to get to, like, like we talked about at the last discussion of this item, this is get to 30% design.
Yes.
Which is not complete schematics.
Not complete, no.
And we will also be, as a city, taking on the survey contract ourselves so that that's also going to be a component that we.
Correct, yes. So the total budget for this item for Reimagined Brody, this, this line item here is in the CIP fund. It's all street funds, but it's in the CIP fund, 7227. The total budget is 106,000, this task order, which is actually a MEND task order and Freeland Turk is the subcontractor, is 75,000. So that leaves $31,000. I don't, hope, certainly hope the survey work doesn't cost that much money. But yes, that, that will be, to accompany this is, if the, this task order is approved, staff will then start receiving bids and quotes for, for getting survey work done on Brody Lane.
And Carolyn, you may know this, but we don't know this, the full details of what that survey work would be. But have you, could you extrapolate what the probable cost of that would be? Would be still, you think it's pretty fair that we fit under this budget?
Yeah.
Councilor Rosenbaum?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First off, before we do, and whether we approve it or do not approve a schematic plan, is to know and funnel down the scope of work. And I know that you, Turk Engineering did their scope of work and I know that Men Collaborative did their scope of work. But it's based on what does council want. So we gave direction, which was very general direction previously. We really didn't funnel down deeper. So some of my concerns is, and as Matt mentioned, as we. So some of my concerns is, and as Matt mentioned, as we talked about, things that we could delete from the schematic plan. Number one, raised intersections, they're too expensive. I do not think we need to do that. One of the things we mentioned is that we wanted to do the cost benefit of each project that we were looking at. Number two, median art. You put median art in the center and now you've got a distraction as people are coming and going. And I think it, it is just that, it's a distraction plus a safety issue. So if this is about bicycles and pedestrians, I think the art needs to be closer to where the, the pedestrians and the bicycles are. And I recommended in my notes that they be next to the sidewalk. I would like, of course, any artwork that relates to donkeys and horses, because that's what people remember is the donkeys and horses at the corner of Brody and two ninety. So any kind of artwork that would pull that in would be well appreciated. Number three, artful, artful crosswalks are expensive to maintain. So anytime you add a whole bunch of different colors, now you got to keep that maintained. So I think that can be eliminated. Number four, the trail pole lights, the Ballard lights, the rail pole lights, I think should be eliminated. And we should use the same type of light style that we're using on Ernest Robles' Wade, because you want to tie the city in. You don't want to start with one project on one street and then years later, switch to a whole different look. So tie everything in with Ernest Robles', and I know that we've talked about that. I'm just making sure it's mentioned again. Then on number five, the extended culvert. And I'm going to ask Tom to talk about that in a little bit. Number five, extended culvert. In my opinion, to extend the culvert would be very expensive. It has six barrels. This is a huge culvert. This is not a small culvert. It has six barrels, I got it right, Tom, six barrels supporting this culvert. So to extend it, he will explain that after I'm done with my next. Is number six, minimize on the bioswale. Now make sure the plants that are planted in the bioswale are low maintenance, because we have to think of everything we do as maintenance into the future, cost into the future. And then on wayfinding signs, any wayfinding signs, you may, you have to make sure that the font size is big enough that people can see it at a certain speed that they're driving. So then they see it, it's easy then to think, oh, I could stop in here and shop in here. And let's see. The next thing I wanted to talk about is the survey. This does not include a survey. My thoughts are, wouldn't it be better to have the survey done first? So we know the right of ways that we have to work with and what is in the right of ways. And then we have a better idea of what we can do schematically. So those are my concerns. And then Turk Engineering, if you want to explain the culvert with the six barrels.
Can you hear me okay? Yeah, so I was telling Rudy a little earlier. The problem that we were trying to solve with extending the box culvert was getting enough comfortable space in there for a combined sidewalk. If any of you have been out to the site, you know that when you are walking down the sidewalk and you come to this culvert, things kind of very, it gets very narrow. And the sidewalk is pushed right up against the, the guardrail. And then there's not a lot of space between you and the curb. So we were simply trying to create more space to get a combined facility through there. And that required us to extend that box culvert and construct, construct new headwalls and a new guardrail system. I think Kerry, you said it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our estimate to do that. There are different ways to get people from one side of the creek to the other. We don't have to put a new sidewalk in there. I mean, there, there are alternatives that you can consider, but frankly, I, I really like the idea. It, it, it provides a lot of continuity between what you're doing between two ninety and the creek and then, and then on to ERW and Home Depot Boulevard. So the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is for demolition of everything that's at the surface, taking out the existing headwall, taking out a little bit of the, the culvert so we can tie into the reinforcing steel. And then, of course, extending the five or six barrel structure. I want to say we put in twenty or twenty-five feet of extension. And then we will have a new headwall and a new guardrail system.
So I think one thing that I'd like to see is, I, I like the idea of the culvert. It is an expensive part of the, component of the, the project. It'd be nice if we had a recommended alternative that, you know, whether it's, you know, too difficult to do anything, if we just leave the sidewalk as it is so that council can consider that as a price savings if it comes down to it. If the first recommendation is, yes, expand the culvert, we know the price of it, but what is the next best alternative? Is it to leave the sidewalk as is? Is it to reroute traffic to the Savannah Trail, you know, and have like guideposts, you know, to say that if you want to go a more, you know, if you're biking or if you're, you're trying to, to have a more accessible, you know, place, you know, that being another alternative. So I, I think that would be helpful for council in their way, since that is a, a large component. For me personally, you know, I like the, I think it's, it's one of the things that does tie in that full trail component that we're looking for. And just walking in that area, it's hard to envision that going that detour is going to be, you know, well utilized, because it is so far out of the way to get down to the, the crossing over the creek bed. You're going, you know, several hundred feet out, you know, out, off the sidewalk at that point. But, you know, that might be something that saves us money and allows us to continue with focus on these other, you know, more important aspects of the project too. So I think that would be what I'd ask for, is just, what is, if we don't do that, what is the next best alternative for us? Councilor Menakis and then Councilor Johnson.
So if I remember correctly, Tom, wasn't one of the options, the, a bridge? And we were talking about a bridge coming around there? And then this was maybe a, a less expensive option than that or?
Yeah, we talked about a pedestrian bridge that would have abutments on both sides and they would basically truck that bridge in and just lower it into place. Frankly, I do not remember why that idea did not survive, do you?
I, I do think we did get some preliminary cost estimates and it was about the same, but we can look into it again. And I think there was also a concern about if people are biking, that turn might be a little bit too sharp to take. But I, I think we can revisit that and just ma- make sure that what, what we're remembering is correct and see if there are other options.
Councilor Johnson.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. And then I started wondering if I imagined that the bridge was going to go somewhere else, but I think if it's the same, I think I'd almost rather the bridge. It seems a little more fun than just, you know, still being right up there against, against the road there.
I have a question for, for the men folks. With some of the suggested alternatives that have been there and other things you may want to do is, within the scope of work, will you be within the budget that we've, that we've done for this?
Can you clarify that question? So are you talking about our fee? Are you talking about the construction of the, of the project?
I'm talking about your fee to come up with the schematic design.
Yes, yes, we will.
Okay, I would like to not, if, if that's the case, I would like to see things not cut out of it. Let's see what the price, the estimated prices for these various things are. And not say arbitrarily right now, we're going to cut this thing out and this thing out. Let's see what all the costs are.
Well, our direction was to, at least for the cost of the construction, reduce that by twenty-five percent.
Right.
And so to achieve that, we will need to reduce elements of the plan.
Okay.
Was, does that answer your question?
It does. Well, but I'm, I'm suggesting we leave that in your scope of what things you decide you want to eliminate, rather than right in here now saying, we're going to eliminate this, this and this.
Right, so that will be determined as part of our design process.
Right.
As part of our scope. That's correct.
Okay, good.
And just to remind council, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this is only a thirty percent schematic design.
That's right.
So this is not like, we, at the end of this project, we will not have the full schematic design. This is only thirty percent of that design. But a lot of, a lot of what is included is the value engineering and kind of reassessing the conceptual plan and what are we going to move forward with and what are we going to have to cut?
That's right.
And also just another quick, you know, check on the, what the scope is. But for this task order and this design, we're not including raised crosswalks. We're not looking at the median arts. Like that's outside of the, the boundary of what we're evaluating, right? As far as what the scope of work is.
Yeah, the crosswalks are not in the scope.
Right, that was, that was part of a, a different.
A different phase, right? Because we're only looking at Phase One A as part of this. And then I think a, a sec, a second section, which was Home Depot intersection, was, is now included in this scope.
Okay.
And we will be, I think the final schematic design will have elements of where art can go, but I don't think we were really ever focused on putting a lot of things in the median. We do want to replace what's, what we all call the tombstone with, you know, something that is place making. But I think that's the only thing that is planned on going in the median. The rest would be, as Councilmember Rosengard commented, you know.
Along the path.
Along the path.
Yeah.
And it's more, it's more locating spots where we, we think art could, you know, could be at a future, in a future phase.
That's right.
Can we also replace the tombstone at the end of Ernest Robles? Whatever design we have there, we can. Councilor Menakis.
Two things, if you go back to the drawing, I think there was a place on the further, it was from the, yeah, right here. So I, I think there was a dot in the median for art. And, and I was thinking the same thing, that that, there's really not enough room there. So yeah, I agree, it should all go on the east side. And speaking of the monument signs, Mark, or Mayor, you brought up, didn't we have funds left in some account from COVID and?
We have, we have funds left. We actually moved, we moved those funds into the budget, the American Rescue Act funds.
Yes.
Which honestly, we need to be using, so.
For the monument sign?
Yes, for the monument sign. So we could, you know, we could move forward. That, those, that could really be, especially since where the current tombstones are located now are not actually a part of this Reimagine Brody.
Yeah, we should just get those.
So those should be just a separate project. And we have concepts. I guess, Carolyn, we could, you know, work with F, F, is it F?
Canalis.
And they've even, they've even given us some concepts, correct? Okay.
And we had all those concepts from Canalis.
Yeah, and we actually have concepts from the, the company that can manufacture. So we could.
Let's just get those.
I could work with, I could work with the mayor or I could work with you, council member, we could bring those forward. Those do not have to be tied in to, to this project.
That's what I was thinking.
We have money in the budget.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilor Rosengard.
Has anybody else had their hand up to speak before I speak again? Okay. Nobody answered the question that I asked, which was, would it behoove us to have the survey done first before we do the schematic?
That's the intention. We will need to have that done first before our work begins, because we need to locate utilities before we can really figure out the exact location of the path. So that will need to happen before we begin our design work.
Okay. So you're saying you're okay with going forward tonight with us if we thought schematic plan should be the next step? Or should we hold off on approving tonight, get the survey done first?
Survey really doesn't take that long. So once, I mean, if you approve both today, then we'll, you know, it'll take a couple of weeks to get the survey done and then we can begin our work.
Yeah, I would, staff was waiting for this task order to be approved and then we were going to engage with a surveyor and most likely it will not need to come back to council. So you could, that could potentially be included in the motion and, you know, let staff go. But because it's most likely going to be an amount that council will not have to approve, we'll get quotes and then we'll have the work completed. So we were just waiting for this task order to be approved before we engage.
Councilor Menakis.
I just have one other question. On the City of Austin lighting, I know that the, the green ones that we have on Ernest Robles are approved by City of Austin and they'll maintain those. But do they also have like Ballard lighting? So that, that would just.
The Ballard lighting? I don't.
They do not have a standard Ballard light that we would use. So if you see any like, like anything at the domain or anything like that, that's all, even though it looks like they're street lights and stuff, they're maintained privately. They are not part of those Austin Energy kind of repertoire of lights.
So we would be eliminating that and just going with the City of Austin lighting in what we're talking about now?
I mean, we'll definitely be looking at those City of Austin lighting, the green kind of Sunset Valley style lighting is what they call, what actually Austin Energy calls them. So we'll be looking at those. I mean, if there's a space where we need Ballards, there's are some options for, well, you can see, I just met with a company that does really, really nice solar lights that are Ballard. And so those may be an option that we may be able to consider as well. And they're actually pretty inexpensive, because they don't require trinting and transformers and connections. But they only work in areas where, like they wouldn't work at the corner two ninety, too many trees, but there could be other areas where they would work just fine.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Johnson.
So City of Austin will maintain the green?
I mean, the city pays, Sunset Valley pays for them.
Okay, so that's what I was thinking, they're not doing that of like.
No.
How much, is it just, just economies of scale that it's like cheaper for them to do it?
Yeah, they, we would just be, it's like part of a night watch kind of system, basically. And we, the city just, Sunset Valley just pays for.
Do they do the ones along Jones as well?
They do the, all, all of the green lights that are on the street, except for the ones that are in this parking lot. These are, these are not maintained by the City of Austin.
Okay, and how many other lights are they, are they maintaining like that?
All of the ones on ERW, there's a few in every, on every, there's about one on every street and then I think maybe a couple extra in the meadows. Yeah, there's, there's, there's a few of them all around.
I do have like a, a comment on that, because there's that one in the village that has been, it's been now coven for about two or three months. Is that a concern that we're not going to have City of Austin?
One of the problems is especially when they're, you know, it's easy for them to come out and replace, replace lights and stuff and light bulbs and the connectors inside. But when they have a actual pole, the entire thing's been ripped up and stuff, it takes a very long time to get them in. They, they do have a very long time. I will contact them and see what the ETA on that is, but they do, replacement of those poles takes longer than your average street light that they have in stock.
But hopefully that's not a very frequent occurrence, although it will be on Brody, so, you know, accidents could happen.
They're, they're, yeah.
One more element I wanted to mention that will help not only pedestrian bike safety, but vehicle safety as well. And it's been a complaint that we've received like from Cindy Lassard at the Village is the intersection, Home Depot Boulevard, Brody, and where the Village Shopping Center is. Our city engineers want to work with the City of Austin to work on traffic signalization and kind of modernizing and upgrading the signalization that is at that intersection, because it gets really bottlenecked. So that'll also be a part of the Home Depot improvements. It's not actually making physical changes to the intersection, but it's just working on the signalization of the existing traffic signals. It's another element.
Councilor Rosengard.
Have we thought of reaching out to TechDOT? I read an article that said the development of a bicycle tourism network in Texas is envisioned to be a long-term collaborative process, built incrementally over many years in partnership with multiple public, private and non-profit partners. Opportunities to develop segments may exist where roadway improvements or maintenance is planned. Other segments may be developed as independent projects. Any entity interested in developing a portion of a Texas bicycle tourism trail is encouraged to contact TechDOT Bicycle and Pedestrian Program.
So, yeah, we have reached out to TechDOT and talked to them, especially when Reimagine Brody was under design. TechDOT has a very stringent kind of policies on how to get grants and things like that. So I, we've taken the classes, you have to have certain people qualified to even apply for those grants. So we're in the process of getting those things in place so that we can actually hopefully partner with TechDOT on these projects. So it may be that when we come to construction, we may be able to get some funding or something like that for some of these projects.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor Poten?
I move we approve the revised Reimagine Brody schematic design task order for Men Collaborative for fiscal year 24, 2024 to 2025.
It's our motion to approve, is there a second? They're fighting over it. Councilor Johnson? And that opens up for further discussion. Councilor Rosengard?
Be sure and add a friendly amendment that the survey be done first.
Authorizing staff to move forward with receiving bids for, quotes for the survey? All right, both the motion maker and the second approved amendment. Further discussion on this item, if any members of the public also wish to speak, this would be a time to do it? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, move forward with this and welcome the results of this design, and hopefully we'll get to see some of that back to the public in the next few months. Appreciate it. All right, council, we're going to move to our last agenda item, which is, I know I pulled this one because I want to make sure it was clear what the intention was, Councilor Rosengard. So this is the purchase of the shade structures for the City Hall backyard project, and I don't think we need to get staff to give an overview if you just wanted to quickly verify what you intended.
Within the paperwork, they asked for a 75% deposit before any work starts. That is not normal. Anytime we, any of us was to hire a contractor, we would do 50% upfront and 50% at the end. I talked to the contractor, and they said they're willing to accept a purchase order as deposit without having to put 75% upfront. So that's why I mentioned purchase order is considered as deposit. Their warranty is for 10 years on the sale, and they said, however, you know, so we went through details about the product, and the hardware is only one year warranty, the pipes are 10 years, and I said, well, the hardware is only one year, and they break, the sales are no good because they're going to be flopping in the wind and tear, and he says, well, yeah, but usually hardware doesn't break. I mean, think of nuts and bolts, they're not, not going to break within one year. So anyway, so the main thing was that we don't put 75% down upfront.
Well, we will, using our, you know, purchasing, and they are through the buy board, so we will utilize a purchase order to purchase this equipment as we do most, most large contracts like this.
Okay, so I think Councilor Rosengard just wanted to verify, but we wouldn't be, until they invoice us essentially, we wouldn't be outgiving any money.
Correct, yeah, we would, yeah, the council will, council will approve this tonight, you know, you are, I will sign it, and then a purchase order will be entered, and it will go through the normal purchasing process that the city uses.
Councilor Menakis?
I noticed on the information on the, on the bill, there wasn't a color selection, so what's happening with that?
So I believe we're going to be doing, let me see if I can bring it up. There's a color called River Gum, which is kind of like, if we look at big, if you think about the colors that were picked out for the equipment, there's like that turquoise teal color and some orangey kind of colors. It's like an orangey-yellow kind of turquoise mixed together in two different colors. Let me see if I can get that and pull that up and have Matt pull it up real quick.
Sounds like brown.
No, it's, no, it is not brown. It is not brown.
Bird orange.
No, 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 no.
Are they anywhere close to our style guide?
It's the, it's the blue and the, let's see. Yeah, I'm going to see if I can tease it to you. I can find that color.
Sorry, color always becomes an issue. From the art.
I just thought they were blue because they're blue here.
Yeah, they're, it's not blue. It's like flecks of turquoise and yellow, orangey kind of color in it. Let me see if I can get that. There we go.
Yeah.
It's called River Gum.
River gum?
River gum, yeah. There you go.
It just would be nice if they were similar to our style guide, so we stick with our, the sky, yeah, turquoise. That does, that looks like gunmetal green or something.
No, that's not, yeah, it's, I can't find the little thing. Shade cloth.
Seems like a really good price also, doesn't it? Maybe, well, we, we bought them for the school, and I feel like.
They were more?
Smaller or more, you know.
These are big.
Yeah. Yeah, it's expensive.
Yeah, so I, I'm hoping these are really good quality. Beige and, beige and green.
Yeah, it's like a turquoise in it.
Do we have other color options? That's like shade cloth with yellow in it. I don't know, just. Because I think they come in a lot of bright colors.
Um, yeah.
Well, we have a style guide that has colors in it.
Yeah, and so none of the colors are exactly like what you are in a style guide. None of them are right there.
Exactly.
So, the, I mean, there's some blues, there's some, I mean, there, this one was the closest that mixed the yellows and stuff from the style guide with the blues from the style guide together. Otherwise, you have things that are very blue or very orange. It just depends, so. The posts are going to be kind of like a creamy kind of color that matches the cream that we had on the bike racks and stuff.
And they'll all be the same color?
The post, yes.
No, the sails?
Yes. Unless you want, we can do multiple colors.
I'm just saying, it's an opportunity for some bright colorful art, and to have it all look the same, just saying, but whatever. Just thinking about that.
Did they, on that side, do they have a, how many options are there, Carolyn?
Yeah, like, orange, yellow, green, blue, purple, we have purple.
I'm just kind of curious, like, is, are we talking about like dozens of options that we don't?
Yeah, there's not a ton of options. There you go, Matt.
Has an order already been placed?
To what? No.
No, okay.
That's why I want to ask about colors, which is, so there was nothing specified. So, yeah. So one of the things that, why I think about this is, when we worked with Amber Santa Canalys, and Canalys came up with all these ideas for public art, and some of them were shade cloths and stuff, they were brightly colored, that kind of went along with the bright colors in the style guide. Yeah, there you go, so.
I like the bluebird shade.
Yeah, the sky blues, yeah. Well, they're in different places, so.
Well, it could be like yellow, orange, green, you know, or, or combinations that look like our site.
That, yeah, they look, so if you look at our.
Like that, it could be, yeah, like, you have four different colors there.
Yeah, you have the blue of the little water, and then there's the green, and then there's orange and yellow. That's kind of too bright, yeah. The aquamarine is pretty, the.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Like our letters. So just consider looking at some of those designs where they had multiple colors on sculptures and stuff that was part of the Canalys presentation to us. Sometimes I think we just forget the work that we've already done and what we've paid for graphic artists to look at, and we just need to be trying to bring as much of that in, I think, as possible. So I don't want to belabor the topic, but.
Councilor Johnson?
If, does the color selection have to be part of this going out?
No.
No.
For the order.
Well, we have to order it.
Right, but we could discuss that after we're done with our council meeting, then we could discuss colors.
No, if this gets approved, you're going to like order them, right?
Or you want?
So we.
You want it on record as to what colors are decided tonight?
Yeah, if you want to get colors.
Okay.
Is that in scope of the?
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk offline about it, because I don't know what, if the picnic tables and the stuff have colors underneath it, then you have to think about that.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to do this maybe, not during the meeting, and we can look at everything. We can look at the picnic tables, what color the bowls are going to be, and some of the other equipment, yeah.
Yeah, Karen, if you're willing to work with staff on, on making some recommendations, I would entrust you with, like, my, at least.
Yeah, my blessing.
I so volunteer.
And I think, I think in my office, I may have like samples that you can see them in real life versus just online.
Let's schedule some time after the meeting and I'll meet with you.
Well, thank you for pointing that out. That was something that I don't, it doesn't come to me naturally to think about, but I like the idea of having, like, an opportunity for as much visual arts, you know, and even if it's limited to like the choices we make for sale design and other equipment that's out there, so. I did also just want to, it came to my mind, the community garden looks great, you know, the, and I'm glad you guys got the inside, you know, now stained, but I think that fence looks marvelous, and I think that, you know, a really good job by public parks on that. Councilor Johnson, or Councilor Rosengard?
I move that we approve the purchase of shade structures for the City Hall backyard for the amount of not to exceed $46,300, and that a purchase order be utilized versus 75% financial deposit.
Second?
Any further discussion on this item? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion passed, and council, we are ready to adjourn. Councilor Menakis?
Oh. I'm still in color land. Motion to adjourn.
Just a second for that, Council mayor, for 10 seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we adjourned at 7:01. Thanks, everyone, and thanks staff for supporting the meeting tonight.